Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, June 22. If you will please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Miller will lead us this evening.
Please join me in my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Deaton, here.
Mayor Potem Sloan, here.
Councilmember Miller, here.
Councilmember Masalavet, councilmember Vera Papa, here.
Now is time for the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or to rearrange the order of the agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to pull anything this evening? Rearrange the agenda? Okay, seeing none, could I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So move. Second.
Please vote. That's five zero to accept the agenda. Next on our agenda is presentation and recognitions, and tonight we have none, so we will move right into oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, staff, the public. It's a pleasure to be before you. It's been a little while since I've seen you all, so it's nice to be here. Really, all just sharing good news today. Love sharing good news. As co-chair of Centennial Marketing, I just wanted to report out to council and the public that we are really doing a big push with the BRICS right now. So if you have not gotten your BRIC form in, it's available at the city website. It's also available at SealBeach100TheNumbers.com online, and it's available also in city facilities, including the Recreation Department. The deadline for that is July 1st, so we're going to really want to make sure that everyone gets that in at that time. Also to report out, we've had a great series of movies so far, really excited about it. I know, I want to thank the police department and Public Works for allowing us to get a generator from the 13 and get that moved over to Edison Park so that we can have a fantastic showing of Paddington in District 2. Councilman Sloan made some great remarks, and then, of course, before that, we saw Big Hero 6 in Eisenhower Park. I would say the crowd was probably 500-plus people in Eisenhower Park, and I would say in Edison Park, we had well over 200. It was a great night. This centennial also continues to march forward with our next movie in the park in College Park East coming up in Councilman Miller's district on the 27th, so we're excited about that as well, just spreading the love. Also with this centennial, I want to thank staff as well and the executive committee. You know, this has really been a labor of love for a lot of us, and it's a joyous challenge, I think, to get everything pulled together. And I also want to thank our newspaper, our community newspaper, and also a lot of the regional publications who have been picking up our stories, and city staff for helping promulgate that. The website and social media, thanks to my co-chair, Deb Mashin, has really helped drive awareness. We've really been overwhelmed in a lot of events, so much so that we're trying to, the Lions are bringing forth some extra resources to potentially make sure that there's plenty of food at all of these events that the celebrations show wants to have food at. So we're really excited about that. The other item I wanted to talk about, because, gosh, I feel like events are just right around the corner, one after the other, is the Lions Fish Fry, 71st Annual Fish Fry, coming up the weekend of the 17th, 18th, 19th of July, and that's going to be a great couple of days of bands and opportunity drawings and having some fish and fun. And I know the city manager and many of council who were there last year, we hope to see all of you and all of staff. And finally, I also wanted to again acknowledge the police department for really keeping our community safe. I happen to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Seal Beach Police Foundation, and as a result of Prop 47 and the fact that there are a lot of people who have been maybe released that are interested in easy valuables, we all really need to be aware to lock our cars, our homes, and try to do all that we can to make sure that our community stays locked tight and safe when it's supposed to be, and thank you, Chief, for all that you do. And that concludes my report on those areas, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Olaina Anderson, that's O-L-A-I-N-A Anderson. I'm the former president of the Moms Club of Seal Beach Old Town, and I want to thank everybody for the Tot Lot, which is the place I first met everybody I know in Seal Beach. All the moms go there. My daughter was, yes, less than a year old when we first moved here, and that's where the Moms Club had their first meetings, and that's where I continued to lead meetings. My daughter Ellen is now five and loves to show her cousins and friends and everybody that she can swing on the swings and look at the ocean at the same time. I'd love to afford that experience to other children of our town and other parents. It's just such a wonderful place to relax, let your kids play, breathe in the salt air, and enjoy yourself. It really is a centerpiece of Seal Beach and a main tourist attraction as well, and I hope that you will all vote to approve any monies necessary to refurbish it and make it wonderful for the years to come. Thank you.
Rhonda Winckler. I wasn't here two weeks ago because I wasn't sure what my position would be in Leeser World, but I'm happy to announce I have the privilege of being there for having that corner office with all the widows for another year. But that's part of the news. The other thing I'd like to bring to your attention, we also have a little bit of a centennial report. Patrick Gallegos, the city clerk, were with us today as we ironed out the BRIC program. I got all the flyers in the same room at the same time, and we came all together, and I think it's a done deal. The flyers will be passed out to 7,000 homes this week on Thursday, and we're going to have a question and answer in the paper after that, an article this Thursday, another article next Thursday, and I think you're going to be very pleased with the result. I was so pleased to have everyone down there answering all the questions at the same time. The other thing is, we also will have put our movie in place. I think Mr. Gallegos was a little surprised at how big our amphitheater was. Which brings me to a little bit of what I wanted to share. I'm always surprised when people don't know what's beyond those walls. There's a lot there. I mean, whether you're talking about a health center, or a post office, or a credit union, gardens, I mean, mini gardens, our pools, everything's there, and we would be very happy to take any of you, one at a time, more than one, whatever, on a personal tour, my personal tour of Leeser World, but I can also share with you the challenges, like, can we ever get that Golden Rain Channel covered? Outfold's going to be a lot of money, but you haven't given up hope. And the same thing goes about all the other parts of Leeser World, and what's really critical that came out in this meeting was you need to understand how we work. We have committees. Nothing gets done unless you go through a committee, and the committee makes the recommendations to the board, and that's how we put it together. And so, it takes us a long time. We have to get to the right people, and then we're dead between May and June, because that's when we totally wind up one set of fiscal business and start the rest of it. So please don't hesitate to call. The number's easy. Our councilman, Sandra Masalavet, can get it there, and Mr. Sloan, we'd be happy. And of course, we thank you, thank you, thank you. The farmer's market is a blazing success. They've actually had vendors sell out, because this is a farmer's market our people can walk to. So everybody's there, but we also are going to put before our board in July, actually extending the bus lines and start assembling the service so that they can bring them in there too. So stop by, and if any one of you wish to be my or anybody other's guest, we're having our amphitheater shows. We start out with Debbie Boone, we have Charo, the Jersey Boys. For those of us that sort of matured during the 50s and 60s, it's going to be an exciting program. So please, don't hesitate to join us. We're just a phone call away. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Naomi Way. That screaming child in the back is mine. His name is Kiwi. We just wanted to be here tonight to thank you so much for caring about the safety of the children. I think the new playground will be amazing, and we're very, 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 very excited to get new and updated and safe equipment. So, sorry for the disturbance, and thank you. Thank you, thank you for making our kids' safety a priority.
The babies are never a disturbance. Thank you. Anyone else?
I gave Sean the person that was in charge of the, what I call Dirt Sand, Meg Vaughn. I went to the coastal commission, and 30 gave me her card. I called her and left a message that I would like to see the environmental impact report. I have not heard from her. She will not leave a message. I'm going back to the coastal commission to see that answer. Because always, like, the water, the water that we pay for, the water that I'm restricted to not use, I believe that you need to tell the Surf Rider Foundation that they were going to cut off some of their water. Let them bring the water. A lot of them already do. We need the water for the trees, we need the water for our own personal houses. We need the water. Let them bring their water. Out here, the Newport Beach is cutting off the water for the surfers. My neighbors, when they take their kids to the beach, they take them home to wash them off. We need the water, we're paying for it. And doesn't the city use a lot of water? And over there, the, what I call the yacht club, the tennis court, the jail, it doesn't pay for itself. But anyway, at the last meeting, Councilman Deaton, you know, it's transparency and ethics. Attorney Flowers, I always talked about, when you're making a decision, make the right one. Make it transparent and make it good on ethics. So I'm talking about all this money that was hidden from us for these pliers, for Measure E and Measure D. It's not transparent. But at the last meeting, you said that the City Council voted for it. The previous City Council voted for it. Now, if you voted for it, you broke the Brown Act. If you voted for it behind closed doors without the city clerk there, you broke the Brown Act. You're not supposed to have a meeting about the items that you're not going to bring forward. Those were never brought forward. The few people that tried to see what you're doing that's unethical or not transparent are trying to see where the money's going. The money went out. When I saw the first flyer, I said, "That was disgusting. Nobody ever talked about it." Now you're telling me that you broke the Brown Act? I don't believe, Gordon Shanks broke the Brown Act, and I don't believe that Councilman Miller did either. So, and on top of that, now I'm told, you must have known that up in Sacramento, they put a limit on how long you can go before you report the Brown Act law about your City Council. Nine months.
You have one minute.
One minute. So I'm really shocked, Mayor Deaton, that you would say something like that. And, you know, the real paper won't report it, so what am I going to do? I'm going to find out, I'm going to find other ways to get all of this out. Because here we are, we've got this lady that says, Mrs. Whitley, that I don't know, that she helped get the red bus in town, that she helped go to the coastal commission. We're paying her to do all this? That she helped get the business, another broad new potential tenant for the pier business that's sitting out there vacant for how many years now? What are you people doing down here? The taxpayers need to know. If you broke the Brown Act and you waited till it was nine months, they need to know that this City Council is not ethical and not transparent. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and city staff, Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to talk about a problem that came to my attention maybe last July or August that's actually related to the fee schedule that you'll be voting on and discussing later during the meeting. And the problem is that home occupation owner, home businesses, are not being told, not being informed that they qualify from an exemption from the business tax license if they gross less than $25,000 a year. That exemption came from a series of council meetings that were held back in 2005, and I know that predates all of you. I was banging around at that time, and actually, this whole issue about exempting small businesses, including home businesses, from the business tax license was championed by Councilman Levitt from Leeser World. We had three meetings in 2005, and the conclusion was that if you make less than $25,000 a year, you'd be exempt from the $215 a year business license fee. Now, I know that there's a problem that home businesses are not being told about this, because I operate a home business, I'm a part-time consultant, medical consultant to the State Department of Justice, so I have a business license, I've had one for a while. And after 2005, I would renew it every year, and I don't make very much money, I always have made less than $25,000, so I've always qualified for that exemption and applied for it by bringing in a tax return. Well, last summer, I got my renewal notice, and the renewal notice is actually on the back of the page I gave you. And the renewal notice, unlike prior years, in the prior years, the renewal notice had told me about, or reminded me, about the exemption, the $25,000 exemption. The renewal notice I got last summer didn't do that. Didn't mention the $25,000 exemption at all. All it mentioned was a senior citizen exemption if I was over 65 and made less than $10,000. And I was just, I was very surprised to get that, but well, whereas, I know I'm still exempt even though I'm nowhere near 65. So I went down to City Hall, and I asked the clerk there, I said, "Am I still, do you still have the program? Do you still have the exemption?" Because my notice doesn't say it, and she said yes. She was very helpful. She had a go check, and came back in about five minutes. It was very helpful, and then she gave me the waiver, gave me the exemption. What made me realize, though, is that there must be tens, if not hundreds, of other home-based business owners who, you know, haven't been around since 2005 and don't know about Council Policy 100-8 that was adopted in 2005. This relates, I'm bringing it up now, I had written in The Sun West August on this. Nothing's changed since I got another business license renewal just a few weeks ago, and it was the same as the one I just handed you from last year. And it relates to the fee schedule that we'll be talking about later, because on page 39 of the fee schedule, there's actually, this senior citizen exemption is in the fee schedule, and staff is proposing to tweak some of the words, reduce it a bit. But the point is, is that this senior exemption is totally moot. I mean, the senior exemption, $10,000, shouldn't even be there. What should be in the fee schedule is your Policy 100-8, which is the $25,000 check year system.
You have one minute.
In Leeser World right now, there may be seniors there who, if they make 11, if they, it's not net, it's gross 11,000 a year, they're going to pay the fee, but actually, they're exempt under Policy 100-8, they're not being told that. So, it's kind of a long story, it's a little bit complicated, but we're going to be looking at this fee schedule. Why 100.8 didn't get put into the fee schedule, I don't know. That I can't answer. But really, the section on page 39, bringing seniors should be taken out and 100.8 be put in there so that the home businesses know this and the seniors know this, everyone knows this, and we're all covered by the $25,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I am closing the oral communications, and we will move on to the city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Part of the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding three items on the posted agenda. All council members were present with the exception of one of the initiation litigation items in item number one, from which Councilmember Vera Papa abstained and left the room for the discussion based on a conflict of interest with his employer. On all three items, the council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you. Ms. City Manager? Yes, Mayor, I have one item tonight, and thank you, staff, for covering all the upcoming calendar events, so I'll save you a second note on that. But I'd like to highlight, since summer's now official, and we have a lot of positive, fun things going on in our marine safety department, so I'd like to ask our marine safety chief, Joe Bailey, just to give the council and community an update. Chief.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. I thought we'd do this with some beach safety tips. So my first tip for the night is learn to swim. Learn to swim, and we're offering swim lessons in Magapul. They started not this week, but last week, so we're in our first session. The next session starts next Monday. We teach kids to swim, not only kids, but adults, from infants to adults who are interested in getting lessons. So there's private lessons, group lessons. We teach just under 1,000 swim lessons each summer, so it's quite the program. We have quite a great group of instructors up there and lifeguards. My second beach safety tip for tonight is always swim with a buddy. And so we have 350 buddies down at the junior lifeguard program, actually around 365 this year down, and we started junior lifeguards this morning at 9:00. So that's a seven-week program, 365 kids or so, and they run and swim and learn about lifeguarding and beach safety. Our goal is to make them ocean-proof by the end of the program, so that, it's really an exciting program every year. And the first couple of days, we're always interested in the parking lot until everyone figures out we're going counterclockwise. So, everyone out there watching, counterclockwise in the parking lot. My last beach safety tip is ask the lifeguard where it's safe to swim. So the junior lifeguard parents and a lot of people in the public have been talking about the sharks in Surfside. So they're still over there, we're monitoring them, we have warning signs up. They're pretty much staying between the rocks at Anaheim Jettie and Warner, which is Sunset Beach. There's approximately 13 different sharks out there. Long Beach State's working with us to monitor them. They've tagged seven of them. They've put underwater cameras in the water, and they leave them there for a couple of days to try and get pictures of them. So the shark lab at Long Beach State's helping us. We're doing everything we can to monitor it. And I just want to be really clear for people that come down and enjoy our beautiful beach that we haven't had any confirmed or unconfirmed sightings on the main beach, only in Surfside. So we've taken a close look for the last couple of weeks, you know, around the pier, anywhere in the main beach area, no signs of any sharks, so come down and enjoy the beautiful beach, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything else, Ms. City Manager? That's all I have tonight. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Council comments? Councilman Miller? Councilmember Masalavet?
I don't have anything special this evening.
Okay. Councilman Sloan, Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have something to report now that Seth tried to steal my thunder, but I'm going to go ahead and repeat it. Last Saturday, we had Movie in the Park, and I'm telling you, it was really well-attended. People got there early, and they were there at 5:00 PM with their picnic baskets and their strollers. It was just fantastic. Those of you who have been around will know that they had dinner on the ground, and that's what we used to call it. So they had a great time, the movie was terrific, and I would certainly like to thank the entire Centennial Committee for all the work that they've done for setting this up, and several of them were there too, which really was great. So again, it was a very great evening, and I hope that we can do, oh, I know, one of the people said, "Can we do this again?" And I said, "Well, it depends on whether Vicky can give us the money or not." Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vera Papa?
Just to know what Councilman Sloan said and Seth Beaker said. If I went to the pool event last week, it was a great event. Every event they have gets better and better every week. My kids look forward to it. Every week they ask, "What are we doing this weekend, Dad?" So, can't wait to the next event. Thank you all. Great job. Really good job.
Yeah. And just to piggyback onto that, I really appreciate the way the events have been spread out around the town. I know it's important, not only for the people that live in different areas, but it's also important to Old Town to let everybody share the love, did you say? Okay, got it. All right, so thank you very much. We are going to move on now to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move. Second.
Please vote. That's five zero to accept the consent calendar. Now we will move to the items removed from the consent calendar. The first is a public hearing, item G is Zone Text Amendment 15-2 regarding residential development standards in the RHD-20 zone. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll ask our community development director, Jim Basham, to present this item to you tonight, and I know our city clerk, Tina Knapp, will need to comment on a letter that was received from a member of the public regarding this item. Jim?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The item left before you this evening is Zone Text Amendment. It is ordinance number 1646, and members of the council, if you recall, on May 11th of this year, staff did present to City Council concern as it relates to a lot of interest in constructing three-story, single-family homes in the RHD-20 zone classification, and it specifically was targeting the Old Town area. So once we cease instructions from City Council to go ahead, take a look at the residential development standard, clarify the height restriction, which is still existing, 25 feet maximum, but also to look at inserting not-to-seat two stories. So on June 1st of this year, staff did present to planning commission a draft ordinance that did exactly that. It's the development standards that's in the RHD-20 table that specifically underscores the height is existing, 25 feet high for single-family construction, but also added not-to-seat two stories. So the draft ordinance that you have before you this evening is recommendation from staff to move forward, introduce the ordinance number 1646, and move forward with the adoption. That concludes staff's presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
When will we be getting the cleanup language for the other districts?
That should be coming before City Council next month.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll open the oral communications on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, Tina, do you wanna admit this letter of opposition?
Yes, Mayor, you have before you on the dais, each council member has a letter staff received from Cynthia Sadowski in opposition, expressing opposition to the item before you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, is there any discussion? And if not, I would like to make the motion that we adopt ordinance number sixteen forty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yeah, we just wanted to know we closed the public hearing as well.
I did close the public hearing, thank you. No, no, I, I'm not, I'm being facetious. I did close the public. Okay, could we please vote? Five zero, that passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item H, adopt the operating budget and five-year capital improvement program, CIP, approve the CIP budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, set the appropriations limit for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, authorize appropriation by fund, establish new fees, and adopt an amended and restated two thousand fifteen, sixteen comprehensive fee resolution, and adopt resolution number sixty-five seventy-four. Do we have a staff report? Yes, Mayor, thank you. We'll start this item off tonight with our finance director, Vicky Beetley. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Mayor, and members of the council tonight. All we have is a brief summary of what occurred over the last couple of meetings. But just a reminder again, all of the city council goals were met when the budget was put together. And the budget goals specifically were to present a balanced budget, preserve the current service levels, the core workforce, and maintain twenty to twenty-five percent of the fund balance. And when you receive the information at the workshop on June fourth, the budget was balanced. At the evening of June eighth, at the last meeting where we had the CIP workshop after the council meeting, there was no changes to the general fund revenue projection, so that remains the same at twenty-nine million, eight hundred and eighty thousand. However, there were a couple of changes that were introduced by council and those changes were made, and so our general fund expenditures actually changed to thirty-seven million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred, and that's the total general fund expenditures including CIP. The general fund expenditures excluding CIP are now twenty-nine million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred, which is unchanged from the presentation that the council received both on June fourth and again on June eighth. What has changed, however, was the council asked staff to add a couple of projects to the CIP and actually defer one of the projects. They added the two hundred thousand dollars for the tot lot and the ADA improvements at Eisenhower Park. We added seventy thousand dollars for the hydrology study on Westminster. We shifted out forty-five thousand dollars for the landscaping project at the police department. And because capital projects are excluded from balancing of the budget, you can see even with those changes, everything remained the same, we still have a forty-eight thousand, two hundred dollar surplus. And there was a couple of other minor changes, shifts of projects that were made in the CIP in looking at it a second time. And if there's any questions about anything CIP-related, I would actually like to defer those questions that might come up to Sean so he can take care of those. But other than that, with regard to the budget, we're balanced, we have a surplus of forty-eight thousand, two hundred, no revenue changes, no operating expense changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions. You wanna go ahead first?
I have budget questions, I have one CIP question, and I have a number of comments on the fee schedule.
Okay, go ahead.
You wanted to just do one at a time?
Yeah, could I just have her explain one thing and then you can go through it all? Could you explain what the surplus means? My understanding is that the surplus means we bring in X amount of dollars, we spend Y amount of dollars, and the surplus is what's left over for that fiscal year, am I right? That is correct, and that surplus is net of any additions that we might make to any of the assigned fund balances that the council has set aside, example, fiscal policy. Well, I wouldn't want anyone listening to think that all we had was forty-eight thousand dollars left. So could you explain the twenty, twenty-five thousand, twenty, twenty-five percent reserves that we have? Certainly. At the council's direction, the city has a practice and a policy of setting aside a minimum of twenty percent of the operating budget every year, and a range of twenty to twenty-five percent in each year. And we are at the twenty-five percent range, so when we set that money aside, that's assigned for things that might come up during the year that are unexpected, but the council has said, "Look, we've, we've got this money and if something really big comes up, we can make a decision to go ahead and spend that money." The beauty of this surplus, however, is any of money left over at the end of the year actually goes into unassigned fund balance. And unassigned fund balance is a better pot of money, for lack of a better term, for us to spend from because that means that it hasn't been set aside for anything, it's excess of revenue over expenses, and we use it as kind of the rainy day fund in addition to the other set-aside. So not only have we have this target, but we've got other money that we can spend before we dip in to that savings account of the twenty to twenty-five percent fiscal policy set-aside. And that twenty to twenty-five percent is about seven million dollars, is that correct? It's estimated to be about seven and a half million by the end of the fiscal budget that we're considering tonight. Okay, so I just don't want people to be confused between surplus and reserves because we have maintained a very strong reserve balance. Right, and it's very similar to your checkbook, you know, what you, what you get paid and what you spend, and if you're able to put a little money aside in the savings, that's what we would consider our surplus is money that goes into a savings account. Okay, thank you. Okay, you're on.
I have a few budget questions. First of all, I just want to confirm, will the executive staff and city manager be receiving one percent or half a percent increase based on the CIP?
There is a one percent increase that has been included in the budget, yes.
Okay. The next question I have is on page thirty-four. Actually, it's a question about the sand replenishment, is it in this budget, budget, or will it be in next budget? Next budget, we've paid the money, I just wondered which budget it'll show up in?
The sand replenishment is in the current fiscal year of fourteen, fifteen, not in the fifteen, sixteen budget because of sand replenishment project. The emergency nourishment, if that's what you're referring to, is in this year.
And it's in here?
Yes.
And it's how much is that?
Sean?
So, the emergency project we did this current year was not in the current budget and came about as response to an emergency and opportunity. So budget amendments were done to amend the budget, but it will not be shown in the current upcoming fifteen, sixteen budget.
It won't be in this budget?
No. No, the project's been completed and adopted by the city council.
Okay. The other question, I just, the general, the general administration went up about six hundred and fifty thousand, what caused that number to go up?
The primary changes for that were the accounting change that we've discussed several times prior to the meeting tonight about the, how we handle the joint powers insurance authority premiums in the budget and the credits that we were giving in the past. We would net the total together to show a reduced budget, but our auditors asked us in the last year to change that accounting practice, so now we fully show the amount of the total premium due. When we pay the cash, we'll take the credit, but they've asked us to include the full amount in there. And then in this current fiscal year, there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for nonprofit grant requests that don't appear in the budget next year. So really, those two are the big primary changes.
Okay, thank you. On page forty-eight, maybe later I could get a copy of breakdown of the contract professional services, unless you have it tonight?
Well, the, on page forty-eight, what is listed there is every contract that's shown in there, in the city manager's budget. The dollar specifics, we do have the detail, but the listing there is a listing of everything that's done. There is one change that we'll be making because we allow for flexibility for things that come up during the year, and so we'll add a description for miscellaneous expenses because we just don't know what that's gonna be used for.
And is Long Beach Transit there or is it back on page one seventy-six?
Long Beach Transit is there because up until the current fiscal year, it was funded out of the city manager's budget, and because we have prior history in the document, we leave that description there. When that final year rolls off...
But there's no money allocated to it?
There is no money allocated in the city manager's budget.
All right. And the last one is on page two forty-two. It's just, let me see. I wanted to check now, is the, is the emergency power for City Hall, that's in sixteen, seventeen? Are those carried, are those costs carried over, the dollar amounts carried over in the budget?
So the, the budget document shows the year one projects within the five-year capital improvement program. The emergency generator was pushed out to fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, so it will not be shown in this, on page two forty-two of the budget.
Even though the money's been allocated? Hasn't it been allocated?
Well, that's correct, it was allocated, but now it's being pushed forward into a future fiscal year, so.
So we don't show future years then?
Not within the adopted...
Okay. The other question I have is on the bike plant path for the drainage improvement project. Is, would that be better under, under the media reserves than under the storm drain? Or is it because it's a storm drain, that's why we put it there?
I'll go for that one.
So the project seeks to improve a storm drain facility, that's why it was selected to be funded out of that storm drain allocation. The benefits to the project are numerous. It is always advantageous to have a facility underground versus an open channel, particularly next to an arterial. So there's multiple benefits, aesthetic, safety, as well as the potential future uses of the ground surface, which is mainly the bike, bicycle track.
Did we get a special loan from the state on that a few years back?
I believe the loan you're speaking to, in reference to, is a sewer loan that we achieved from the state revolving fund, does not apply to storm drain.
Okay, yeah, no, I wasn't sure. Okay, my last question on the budget is, I'm concerned about the detention center in that we're now eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, almost eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars negative each year. And when, when Chief Lumen was here, we did an analysis, analysis of the police station. At that time, we only had a negative of two hundred thousand, and we justified that negative based on we kept an officer on the street. And so, that means this, this number's now exceeding, taking a two hundred thousand off that we anticipate keeping the officer on the street, we're still down three hundred and thirty thousand more than we ever have been. So I, I think the detention centers needs to be bought, I would like to have a budget item on it, excuse me, an agenda item on it to, to look back at the detention center to figure out why we're, where we're at and see if there's a way to resolve the bigger deficit. I mean, we, we had a two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar deficit when Chief Lumen was here and we put this program into effect, but it seems to be drifting further and further out, we're three, three hundred and fifty-seven, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars higher than we were before. So, I would like to have an agenda item on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could just briefly comment? We'd be happy to do that. I know one of the changes we made that might be impacting that number is converting some of the commander's time to the detention center account since he has direct oversight over that division, but we'd be happy to come back with a full analysis that you heard back when Chief Lumen was here, happy to do that. And I think that was really valuable when we did it.
Were you here, I couldn't remember if you were here. That, it's just, I've lost track of why, I remember we had two hundred thousand, it was working, we thought it would work. And I know we aren't running out to sales, cells like we thought we would because of federal government, so.
Right.
Okay. With that, my next question, that's, that's to my CPI and my budget questions, next to fees, do you want to wait or go?
We're discussing all of this at once, right? Sure, we can address any questions. Yeah.
Okay.
Here we go.
The first one, I was just gonna mention, a cleanup item for the, for the fee schedule. It has the old council people's name there, the previous council, and also has the previous city clerk, so that's just a cleanup you may wanna make, I'm sure. And on page thirteen, I'm gonna use the red line version because it's where I have my comments marked. On page thirteen...
Listen to the mic.
Oh, thank you. On page thirteen, we have an increase in the, we have a number of these increases that went up more than, than the, the CIP, CPI, CPI, as an example, concept, the one in particular I'm looking at is the concept approval coastal, it went from a hundred and fifty-five dollars to two hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is significant. Do we have a reason why we did that?
I can defer any questions or any answers to Mr. Basham, but what I would like to say is that when we look at the fee schedule, we evaluate the actual cost of providing a service. So if we only do CPI, which was about point seven percent, but the amount of time and effort expended is actually greater than the CPI change, the staff has the opportunity to adjust these fees to the actual cost each year when the fee schedule is presented. And Director Basham may be able to add on.
I thought we did a lot of analysis till we made all these costs what they really were a couple of years ago.
When, I'm sorry, when the, it's my understanding, when the cost allocation plan was done, there was a lot of decisions made about not coming up to one hundred percent of the actual cost because the cost changes would have been so significant at the time that cost allocation plan was done.
Okay. All right. Now, my next one is on page sixteen, and this is very important to me. For some reason, the beach parking's been changed from six dollars to ten dollars, and that's very significant, especially unless you're gonna start having the residents can have fifty percent discount, because my people are already complaining about the six dollars. And I realize other cities have it higher, I thought we agreed you were gonna leave at six, so I don't know, this is, this is a seventy percent increase. I have people that have to come down and pay for the day to be in that beach parking lot that are paying for the extra cleaning of the beach and everything else we're doing. So I'd like to keep that at six dollars, or if we finally ever have a sophisticated system, some way that residents can have a fifty percent discount.
Well, we can certainly look at a discount for residents, a couple of comments that I have, with the comprehensive parking plan that we've done, this is a recommendation that was made by our consultant, that moving to ten dollars per day is still significant below, significantly below any of the other surrounding beach cities. And at the workshop where we discussed this, it was my understanding and recollection that council actually directed us to take a look at this, but to keep it lower than our surrounding agencies. So for example, Huntington Beach is fifteen dollars a day, we're proposing moving it to ten dollars a day. The other thing is that our residents are entitled to buy an annual beach pass, which is listed in the fee schedule, and that is fairly significant, you can use that every day, all day, any day, to park in the beach lots, in any of the beach lots, and those residents that are over the age of sixty-five actually get, excuse me, a discount of about forty percent on that. So I don't have, I think it's a hundred and, a hundred and fifty and a hundred and three for non-residents and for residents or something like that, don't quote me, but I know it's in there and I can find it. So that's pretty significant. The other thing that I would like to point out, Councilmember Miller, is that the hourly rate is not changing, only the daily rate is changing. So we're leaving the cost low, you can buy any number of hours, if you were only planning on being there for two hours, it is only gonna cost four dollars, so we're just looking at changing the daily rate.
Well, I thought, we said we wanted to keep the rate where it was so people would come to Seal Beach. And my frustration with this now is that I created this whole thing like seven years ago because we were foregoing a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue the city could have, and I hate to back it up now, now we're saying that that's why we're gonna raise the beach parking. I... I, I just don't think it's appropriate to raise the beach parking. We have, we have people that come from the northern part of the city, and so you can put in place a fifty percent discount for the residents that pay for that beach, that use, that, you know, deserve to be able to come down and use the new swing set, and deserve to come down and use our beach and not pay ten dollars a day. I'm not for adjusting this parking fee at all.
Well, I remember it as Vicki remembers it, that we wanted to keep it very competitive, but that we were so much lower than the surrounding beaches that we felt that we should raise it some, but it should still be much lower than other beaches. I just read today that Newport's raising theirs again also, which, you know, it does get to be really prohibitive. I think ten dollars a day is a good value for people to come and spend the day, but I do agree with you that we should have a resident discount. So.
Some of the other cities.
I mean, I need, if I need to take my car down there, I got to pay the same thing, you know, and.
If you do that, you're being lazy.
No, 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 because you carry, you carry ice chests, you carry, I mean, you carry a lot of stuff down there. So I agree with you. I think that residents should have a fifty percent discount, but I also think that if Huntington is fifteen and we're going from six to ten, and Newport's raising again, I think we should have something. That helps offset the lifeguards that, you know, it's one way that out-of-town people can help pay for the services that they receive when they're at the beach.
Out-of-town people are one thing, but the residents.
I agree with you.
So until we can have a fifty percent discount for the residents, I want to see it stay at six. I would like to see, leave it at six.
So how do we get a consensus on this? You want to make a motion?
I make a motion to relieve the beach parking at six dollars.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, so that dies for lack of a second. Okay, next. But Vicki, could you take a look at that? With all of our new passes and everything, there must be a way that we can start looking at residential beach passes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'll talk to the consultant and see if there's something that we can do. I think it would be more a function of, the beach permits are separate than the new permits that we have. It probably would be more a function of equipment and having a vehicle license identified as a resident vehicle license. And then when the new equipment comes into the beach lots, that we will require you to put in your vehicle license number. That is when it would most likely, we would be able to come up with some kind of a discount with a registered vehicle.
Okay, so we'll work on that. All right, next.
The next one's on, it's really more of a question, on page nineteen. Most everything there, starting with, as an example, item twenty-six, seven, oh, eight, they're more like ten percent increase rather than a CPI.
Again, this is from the work that we're doing on the comprehensive parking plan. Our consultant has provided information. There's sort of a statewide bailment schedule for fines in cities. And she looked at the most current bailment schedule that is used in the state of California, then looked at our surrounding agencies, and identified for us that we are below our surrounding agencies, and by moving it up to the recommended levels, it puts us more in line with what we can charge and what is being charged by the surrounding agencies.
We're becoming Surf City Two, huh?
I don't think it's just Surf City.
Mary Berry by the Sea is getting expensive, for those who don't live right at the beach. Okay, item twenty-nine, page twenty-nine. I see that you upped a lot of the fees for the swim passes and such as that. By the way, to this by the Recreation Commission, shouldn't this type of thing where we have recreation changes like beach parking and, not too much that, but the swimming, the swimming laps and all that stuff have gone up here compared to last time? It was forty dollars, fifty cents for, as an example, for a six, sixteen swim pass, it was forty dollars and fifty cents, now it's forty-eight dollars. Now, that's a twenty percent increase. Is that because it's what everybody else charges?
No.
I'm going to say it's not quite the same kind of pool everybody else has.
Yeah. Chief Bashan, we go ahead and.
I can answer that real quick for you. So I know we talked, the first time we talked about the budget, the wages for the pool lifeguards have increased because we needed to fall in line with proper levels of supervision during those lap swim times. And so those wages for our lifeguards increased twenty percent. So what I did is I looked at those numbers and increased them all twenty percent.
Okay, so you've added a lifeguard?
We added a lifeguard last year, so now we have two lifeguards for all the adult lap swims, and it's really been great, so we have proper supervision. If somebody's sick, we still have at least one lifeguard there to open the lap, so we really haven't had many complaints since we've added that, and we have better supervision.
Thank you. I didn't know that. Let's go ahead to the, on page thirty-one, the basketball courts. We're going to start charging for which basketball courts now?
These are for the outdoor basketball courts. I don't know.
Which ones?
I don't know the specific locations. Mr. Cass, you can come up and address that question.
It would be for Marina and Blue Bell, which are rented for team, this would be for organized team practice, not drop-in use.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we identify the locations? I mean, I guess half courts don't matter, but.
Yeah. I guess it would still apply, say, at Almond Park, too, which has a basketball court. If you want to rent it and reserve it, it would apply to all courts, and I think the reason to not identify it is if there were future courts added, that we wouldn't have to identify them or bring the fee code.
Has this gone to the Recreation Commission?
It has not. That, I.
Shouldn't some of these things be going to the Recreation Commission so that they're on board with them?
Fees? Why would fees go to?
Charging for a basketball court, that's, that's going from free to charging.
Really what it is, is it's just, it's, yeah, and this is just a cleanup, is because we would always charge for that fee, it's just that we're identifying the basketball court specifically as opposed to just being a park rental. We would have charged them the park rental fee beforehand.
So the public can't just go play if they want to play?
They can. This would be if you're doing an organized team practice.
I see. As opposed to when they'll be playing so that people know that?
It is to the best of our ability, as it changes kind of day-to-day, but we do post it to the best of our ability.
Okay, thank you. The next one's on page thirty-two. It's under weddings, weddings and wedding receptions. What does it mean by commercial? And it's four oh six, I just want to know what commercial means. You're back?
Yeah. This would be rental for a special event, but this would be rental, a commercial would be something that you are charging directly for people to enter, which would be a commercial use, as opposed to just a private use, which a wedding wouldn't be something you'd be charging, say, an entrance fee. So it would be to say if someone was to fence off the park and use it for a special event use that went through the special event permitting process, was approved, and they were going to charge a head charge per, to enter into that event, that would be a commercial use because they would then be making money on that event.
Okay, thank you. I have just two more. This may be a typo, I don't know, it's on page thirty-four. The, under motion picture, including video, the expedited film permit went from three hundred to three thousand twenty?
It should be three oh two.
Ah ha.
Thank you.
I thought there was something special happening. Okay, and the last one is, oh, the last one is kind of what Dr. Goldberg brought up. I was looking at this. It's this, I know on page thirty-nine, it's the home occupation permit, food industry permit. I remember Councilman Levitt putting through twenty-five thousand for senior citizens, and now I'm reading things like ten thousand. I'd like a, I would like to have an agenda item on this so we can clarify this finally. What is, what we've said in the past, what the council's put in place in the past and where we're at today?
I would like to comment if I can on that right at the moment. So a couple of things have changed. The home occupation cottage food industry was placed into the business license portion of this schedule within the last three years at the latest, well after the council policy was adopted. It was discussed and considered, and this is, this is cottage industry and home occupation. This policy that the council adopted specifically refers to businesses, and a business is different than a home occupation business, excuse me, a home occupation. When you come in and apply for a home occupation permit, it's a permit of use versus a business license. And Jim, if I'm misspeaking, please jump in at any time, but he's, he's kind of educated me on this. So when someone comes in for a cottage industry or home occupation permit, there's actually a fee that's charged for inspection of the premises. Code enforcement or someone in the community development division goes out and inspects the premises to make sure that it's suitable for the use for which they are applying. And because this is a relatively new industry that was added after the business license policy was adopted and the other business licenses had been with us for quite some time, there was a different set of rules that were adopted when this particular cottage industry, home occupation came in, because it really is intended for something to work out of the house. If somebody wants to sell cookies, they can only do it in their kitchen, they can't have other employees. It's only that individual. And because it's not a business specifically identified like other businesses in the city, that's why we came up with this and came up with the lesser level for tax exemption, because it was felt that if it was greater than this, then it would make it more like a business, and if it was like a business, it wouldn't fit into the permit component of the home occupation cottage industry. And Director Bashan may be able to add more if he, if he chooses.
No, actually, that was very good.
Oh, thank you.
I would like to ask a question, though, based on that, and that is, can you give me an example? What's the difference between a home occupation and a business that I'm running in my home?
So there's not much of a difference other than the type of business that you run in front of your home. For example, the state introduced, as Vicki indicated, a new type of business that's allowed in residential, and it's food cottages, where you can actually start baking and making food from your home. In that regard, depending on what type of business you're establishing, it may require not only the fire department to inspect the premises, but also now the building department. So difference from your traditional home occupation business, this is an office that you would have, that's very minor in nature, so that would be the difference. It's more like the intensity of the type of business that you operate from your home.
Now, do you need to do a home inspection for an office-type business?
So typically, yes, we're required, because the provisions that's in the zoning ordinance requires that you can only occupy a portion of your home, which is inside, for the place of your business, and make sure that you're not using your garage. So the only way that we can tell if that is in compliance, based upon the first time of us inspecting it, is that you are in compliance, you are operating a business, it is from the inside of your home, it's not something completely different for which we're giving you a business license for.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like we have more than just one fee schedule going here. We're talking about it other words. We just have one, one item here. I'd like to have an agenda item where we explain all this and we take into account all the resolutions the council's had in the past. If we overrode a previous council agenda item, I don't know we did. So, I mean, the seniors, we have the senior thing going here. I know that Mike had something for the seniors at twenty-five thousand, and I can't get my hands around what he had versus this. I had a business license one time, nobody came and inspected my house, I was doing consulting for my house. And so I think that this, this whole occupation thing needs to be straightened out. So I think.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I know last year when this issue or concern came up, especially on behalf of the work that Councilman Levitt had done on this item, staff did prepare a response to council on that. Unfortunately, I think it's been misrepresented to the public. As far as I'm concerned, it was addressed and we, you know, we've moved on from there. So I would hesitate to see the council tonight not adopt the fee schedule when we need to adopt it in conjunction with the budget by July one, so that we can move forward. So what I would ask is that you give us an opportunity to find that analysis that was done and resend that to you, especially for Councilman Vera Papa and Sandra Masalavitz's benefit before we bring this item back. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, I don't think you're saying not to pass the fee schedule.
No.
Yeah, so.
I'm not going to vote for it, but I'm not saying not to pass it.
Okay, so I think, I think, well, in order to accommodate it all, if we can go ahead and vote on the fee schedule tonight, you send out the prior work that we've been done, and then once that's all been digested, then we can go ahead and examine it again.
Yeah, what I was asking for was an agenda item, if it comes out of a document, that's fine, but I want to see the different types of businesses, I want to see what the different age groups have. This is not clear, and what I, sorry to say, I go with the new people, too, I don't quite remember it anymore exactly what we had in that document. I just remember Mike had the twenty-five thousand for the seniors at one point, and that's about all I can remember. And I remember in my, it's in my district, I think, where somebody was baking cookies or something. So I just don't know how it, right? Was it my district where the cookies were? Yeah, thank you. So I don't understand how it all works together. So if you can explain it to us, fine, just so we all understand it.
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, any other questions on the budget? Okay, yes?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I had a couple of comments. I'm just going back to the beach parking pass. There is a yearly pass for a hundred and two dollars.
I saw that.
That's sixty-two dollars for seniors. I've used that in the past, it's a pretty good deal. Ten times, sixteen times, that six dollars pays for itself, so I think the ten dollars.
Is that an annual pass or?
Yeah, twelve months, whenever you get it, from twelve months, it starts that date. I also had a couple of questions about the Westminster Channel hydraulic study. If someone can just, I don't really understand what the need and purpose is for that, if you can kind of elaborate, the seventy thousand dollar spending on a study.
Sure, absolutely. So on Westminster Avenue, basically between the city limits for Long Beach and Seal Beach Boulevard, there is a open channel that lies directly north of Westminster Avenue. So the open channel has been in place for quite some time. The property that underlies where the channel is located, part of it is owned by the city of Seal Beach, part of it is actually owned by the Golden Rain Foundation, for which the city has a storm drain easement, for the right to have the drainage facility there. There has been requests in the past to place that storm drain facility underground for a variety of reasons. Some of the benefits to the project could be that, number one, if it were placed underground, it is an open channel next to an arterial, so, you know, in the years that I've been around, I think there's, really hasn't been a tremendous amount of accidents activity, but it does pose increased risk over the facility being underground. Additional benefits to placing the facility underground would be, of course, aesthetic, and of course, it could provide potential for use for other facilities such as a bicycle facility. Now, our staff, I know, has had discussion with the city of Long Beach, they called because they're in the pining faces for putting bicycle facilities on their side of the city limits. So we have had talk that, so we do know that there is a potential for the facility extending beyond the end of our city limits. The reason for doing a hydrology study is that our staff, there's never been any analysis to the size of the channel. My suspicion is that the channel is oversized versus the amount of water that goes into it. If the hydrology study indicates that the facility can be downsized, the cost of construction is drastically reduced. So number one, we would like to have the appropriate size facility there. That process also could lead to analysis of alternatives that we could provide to the city council for moving forward with the project. It'll help us with looking for grant funding going forward, and it'd also help with us, help us with the hydraulics, just to even see if the project's feasible. We would hate to build a facility that hydraulically doesn't work and causes problems with flooding elsewhere. So that'd be sort of the wrap of the project.
Is a project like that in the works, or I mean, we're going to do something like that in the future, or?
Well, we've had discussion about this project in the past. It's never been funded, it's been, the study has been on the unfunded needs list for probably three to four years. So if the council approves going forward, it will allow the staff to do the study and position the project to potentially receive funding in the future.
Do you think if we did a study now, did the project in three to five years, we would need another study, or is it something that these studies need to be close to the actual construction of the project? Because I know sometimes the dynamics change, you know, the weather changes and everything else changes, so.
Sure. I wouldn't imagine that the hydrology of the area's going to change if we're not going through development. I don't foresee any. I don't foresee any large issues there. Really, the only thing that potentially could change is potential funding sources, and I don't necessarily think that a hydrology study that's a little bit dated drastically alters that landscape.
Okay. All right, thank you.
To piggyback on that, I think one of the ideas that is being brought up is, when we go out to look for grants, how soon, how close does the grant need to be to the study?
So on a technical document like this one, where the technical information isn't going to change, I don't think that that necessarily is going to matter that much. If the grant were to have other components that provide scoring, those components may need to be updated, I'll provide an example. Many of the grants that we chase after have the targeting disadvantaged communities, and so there may be an income requirement that maybe we're looking at, maybe there's a civic participation component to it that scores points. Things like that would need to be refreshed if we were doing that, but those really aren't components to this document, anyway. These are, this is strictly a technical document that looks at the facility and provides us with options and projected costs with those options, so that we can make an educated decision moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Sean, I understand that Long Beach is looking at this project, too, because that they might want to connect one of their bike trails with us, is that correct?
So the City of Long Beach called because they were weighing options for grant opportunities within the active transportation program. The City, Seal Beach, just applied for a grant within that program to put in bicycle facilities on Lampson Avenue. And Long Beach was looking for similar projects, and so our staff discussed Westminster Avenue with them, and we have, we're not sure that they elected to apply for that project, but we do know that they are considering projects for bicycle opportunities, and they're very, very bicycle-active right now, so they're looking at placing a facility on Second Street.
Yeah, I'm on that street quite often, and it's highly used for bicycles.
Okay, do we have any other questions before we vote? All right, do I have a motion to, Mayor?
Yes, this is a public hearing item, so we need to open it and provide comments-
Oh, I'm sorry.
... opportunity for the public to comment?
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing, please, and if you would like to come to the mic, and you have five minutes to discuss anything in the budget and the fee schedule. I don't have a gavel, I think that's what's throwing me off. Use my phone.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff, Robert Goldberg, Uden. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for bringing up the home occupation issue. I just want to clarify that in 2005, there wasn't, the 25,000 was not specific to seniors, it was for all businesses. And that was very clear in the discussion and in the estimation of how many businesses would be involved. And as I said, there were three staff meetings, excuse me, three council meetings, a meeting from one May 9, 2005, when we were talking about who pays the business license tax. And staff said there are different types of businesses paying the license tax, including dog walkers, caregivers, commercial rentals, residential rentals, fitness trainers, home occupations, attorneys, real estate agents, wholesale brokers, tax preparers, and palmaters. A lot of them work out of their homes. And so this, what was passed in 2005 was meant to apply to all of them, and there was no senior exception, or senior, special treatment to seniors then, and that's why I gave you a copy on the back of the Business License Renewal Bill. This policy, 108, doesn't mention seniors, it was for all of them. So I agree with Councilman Miller, I very much like to see that as an agenda-ized issue. I do appreciate what staff said about the new laws regarding cooking from your home, cottage industry, and food preparation. That may be, that's new, and that may be a different animal, and maybe that needs to be treated differently. But I think this deserves more discussion. The other thing that I think that deserves more discussion was the clarification we just got regarding the pay raises for the city manager and the six individual executives that direct report to her, all of whom have contracts. And these contracts, her contract and the individual contracts that we entered into over the last year, year and a half, they don't have a CPI floor. They have a CPI escalator, it says that their pay will go up by the CPI, but there's no minimum. And so, and that's different than the negotiated contracts that you have with the employee, with the police, and with the employee unions, those are very specific in that there's a 1% minimum. So this year, our April to March CPI was 0.5%, half a percent, and all those four employment contracts all called for a minimum of 1%, so they're getting a 1%. But the senior's contract and the six department managers, they don't have that. And so I don't think, I really don't think you can legally give them a 1% raise through the ordinance you have before you. If you want to give them more than what the contract says, I think you need to amend their contracts, or you have to have a special ordinance that says that, something. But to give them more than their contract calls for, I think qualifies legally as a gift to public funds, so I don't think it's legal to do that. If you want to give the city manager a merit raise, the contract does provide for merit raises, and doesn't say how much those could be, you certainly could give her a merit raise, but that needs to be agenda-ized as a separate item, either in closed session or an open session. And it was made clear to a member of the public that when you had her performance review a couple of closed sessions ago, that you were not discussing salary, and you did not discuss a merit raise for her. And so that would require it to be agenda-ized separately, if you want to give her a merit Regarding the Westminster project, it sounds like the project is a very interesting project, it'd have a lot of good benefit for using what's now kind of a wasteland there. Yeah, women, but I don't think it should, I don't think the 70,000 should come out of the storm drain fund. The money we have in there at the beginning of this fiscal year, 842,000, that's the remnants of what was set aside in January of 2009, it was $5 million set aside to deal with storm drain deficiencies, drainage deficiencies. And we've spent most of that down, we're already scheduled, we're spending another 380,000 this year to deal with drainage deficiencies, that type of thing. This project has nothing to do with a drainage deficiency. I haven't heard it has lots of good benefits, but improving drainage is not one of them. I'm not against the project, but it should come, rather than come out of this limited special fund that we have for dealing with drainage deficiencies, it should just come out of the reserves, the undesignated reserves, and just take it out of there. And so, because we have drainage projects that need to get done, and they're hard to fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the attorney, please, to address the contradiction.
The first issue to address is the question of whether granting an increase to the executive staff would be a gift to public funds. It's in the council's discretion to determine whether an expenditure serves the public purpose of the city. If the council makes the decision that, as I understand it, in this case, treating the executive staff members the same as you're treating the other employee groups with which you have employment contracts, is in the best interest of the city, that's the council's decision to make. And if you make the decision that that's the right thing to do, then by definition, that's not a gift to public funds, because the prohibition on a gift to public funds is against giving away public money for private purposes. The fact that private individuals are benefited by that decision doesn't turn it into a gift to public funds. As I understand it, the council's, the decision before the council is whether to grant increases to those employees who aren't covered by the collective bargaining agreements and treat them the same as the employees who are. If you decide that's the right thing to do, by definition, that's a proper expenditure of public funds. The second question is, I think has to do with the Brown Act implications of doing this. I don't believe that the council necessarily needs to bring up employment contracts and amend employment contracts to give an employee a benefit that, or a compensation that exceeds what is the minimum in the contract. But the Brown Act issue, I think, is dealt with by the fact that we're sitting here this evening in open session, having a discussion of this item in the context of the budget discussions, it's a transparent discussion. I think everybody in the public knows that it's an item on the table, it's certainly set out in the budget documents. So I don't believe that there's a Brown Act issue associated with it, either.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I was going to talk about something else, I'll talk about that first. There's no way that this letter that's on this budget is amending a contract. If we have a contract that says it should be whatever it is, that's what it should be. I mean, approving this budget does not supersede a contract. I mean, I don't care if somebody writes it in here. And if, in fact, and I don't think it is, if this is written to supersede a contract, it's not transparent at all, and that wouldn't be good, and I don't think that's the intention. To me, this contract, Mr. City Attorney, this letter cannot supersede a contract, not without stating it's superseding it.
I don't think that it is intended to supersede, and I don't think that it does or that it could. That's not the purpose of the letter.
Okay, so this budget doesn't supersede contracts, either. A contract is a contract. We can't start figuring out every contract that has to do with this budget. It's very hard if it's superseding it. The contract is the contract.
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing I was going to suggest is that, with regard to the revenues from the House in College Park East, it's for storm drains, that maybe we should take the revenues from that House and put it into this fund, to help finance this fund. The revenues right now, I think, are just going to the general fund or something?
No, they are going to the storm drain fund.
They are going there now?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see them there, but okay. All right, that's all, thank you.
The one thing I wanted to add to the answer to your question about superseding a contract, there are a variety of different ways that you can act in a way that is sort of beyond the requirement of the contract, if you decide it's a good thing to do. For example, you have a contract that says these employees in this employment, covered by this employment contract, get the same, get a certain number of holidays per year, or a certain number of paid vacation days per year. The city council decides in a given year that an extra holiday is going to be granted. Well, that might not be in the schedule that's in the contract, but you can decide to give a little more, that there's a reason to do that in a given year, and not be breaching the contract. So I think that's kind of the same kind of decision that we're talking about here, if you decide there's a purpose for doing so.
But I think you'd so say that that group was included in that holiday, that applies to the whole-
You'd make a decision that everybody's being treated the same, and that's what we're talking about with this particular issue.
When I asked Mr. Steele this question earlier, I believe that the answer was that with the contract, we could not do less, but in order to make all classes equal, we could do more. Is that correct?
The parties to a contract are the parties that enforce the contract. So if you have a contract that says, here's what the increase is going to be in a given year, that employee who then, you know, was proposed to get less than what that increases, could come back to you and say, hey, you're breaching the contract. If you're giving the employee at least what is provided for in the contract, but a little bit more, that employee doesn't have an action for breach of the contract against you.
Okay, I think the issue here is that we want to treat all of our employees equally and not give one group, because they have a bargaining unit, more privilege than another.
No, I mean, normally, the purpose of a CPI clause in an employment contract is to provide a cap, because otherwise, increases can vary widely, wildly, excuse me, year to year. That's normally the purpose of a CPI provision in a contract, is to limit your exposure to wild variations in contract prices year to year.
Okay, any other things?
Now, the intention of this, we're not increasing, we're not trying to amend their contract with this budget. If it's a half a percent, it's a half percent, if it's a percent, it's a percent, it's whatever the contract says. We're not trying to supersede it, you said you want to pay everybody equal, then you're superseding their contract. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I know what you're saying, but I also know the attorney's disagreeing with you, so I-
They're disagreeing with me?
Well, I'm saying if the council wants to make a decision to treat all the employees the same, that's a decision that the council could make. If the council would rather direct that all the employment contracts come back for amendment to allow for that decision to be taken care of in the contract, you could do that as well.
What I'm saying to you is, here's a letter, are you telling me that that's increasing everybody to 1%?
No, I'm not saying that the letter is increasing everybody to 1%. I'm saying a vote of the city council to do that, if you choose to do-
Knowingly so, and so really. Right, I agree with that. I worked in contracts 18 years, this is not a contract, this is not an amendment.
And I wouldn't, and I wouldn't say that a vote of the council to grant a particular increase this year has any impact, for example, on next year's contract. Like, it's not an amendment to the contract, it's just a simple decision that says you're going to make, you're going to make a salary number that's a little bit higher than what's called for by the contract. And if you would rather have that decision presented to the council as amendments to the employment contract, I suppose you could direct to do that, the drawback of that is that then you're not, then you're making that a rule for future years. You're making that amendment go forward.
Could I see if I understand it clearly? To me, there's a letter that was at the beginning of the budget document that said, we are giving all employees 1%. That's transparent. The contract for our executive team had a cap of, the CPI, it had no cap, it was just simply the CPI. The CPI this year came in very low, and the rest of the employee groups were at 1%, and therefore, we have before us to vote tonight on whether or not to make all the employees equal or not, and it's that vote which will then determine the fact of the legality of it.
That's correct.
Have you read the letter?
Yeah, the letter is in the packet, yes.
And as amending their labor contracts?
I don't know, I'm not contending that it's amending the labor contracts, I think I've been very-
I think it's the most untransparent thing I've ever seen.
Untransparent? It's right there.
It's there, but it looks like an error, actually. I mean, I've read it, and I said, it is what it is, that's why you have a contract. If it's a CPI, it's a CPI. You're saying you're superseding it, but you're not saying here you're superseding-
No, I don't think we're superseding it.
Well, that's all right, I disagree.
Okay.
No, I mean, the council could certainly decide to stick to that CPI number, there's, I'm not contesting that, I'm saying, I'm just saying, the council has the right, if you decide to do it here in open session, you have the right to go beyond what you've promised, it's just-
If I didn't bring it up tonight, and it hadn't been brought up, it would have just gone through, and it's so untransparent to do that. I mean, if you have a labor contract, and you're saying, okay, all the executives deserve a 1%, you should be saying it straightforward, actually, there should be an agenda item on it, you shouldn't have it tucked away inside of a letter that has to do with the budget. So that's all I can say. It's not transparent, I don't agree with the way it's written, in fact, I object to the way it's written, if that's the purpose.
Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments? Are we, did I close the public hearing?
Not yet.
No? Okay, let's go.
I can go on, I asked, I used to have meetings with the city manager, and I quit. My name is Joyce Ross Parkley. If you want to know what everybody's getting paid, go on the internet, and you can look, that's what she told me. You can, you can go on and look, but I came to that closed-session meeting about her merit paid, and I was told it was not coming- not coming up by you, Mayor Dean, and by the city treasurer. It's not coming up tonight, Joyce. But here we got a letter giving what? It hasn't been agendized, it hasn't come before the public, it's not transparent. It's not transparent. She wrote the letter. You told me she wasn't getting a merit increase. When did you vote on this? It had a body up for the public. It hasn't been transparent.
You're voting on it tonight.
When did the public send the letter?
Well, I'm not going to argue. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. The letter was written by her. I never got the letter. It's come to the point where I think we're going to have to send everybody in Silver Beach the letters, because a lot of people don't have time, order. They can't get it on the dish. They don't look at it on the internet. I had to go on the internet. I pulled those contracts out. They're hard to read, and everybody gets something different. Now you're going to make everybody equal without it coming before the public? It was not on agenda? She wrote the letter, I was told it wasn't coming up by you, Mayor Dean, by the city treasurer over there. This is just getting more complicated, more complicated. We don't have a paper that will report all of this stuff anymore. So I have to challenge you in other ways to make it ethical and make it transparent. And, I mean, the Brown Act, they've already violated the Brown Act because of the other last year. What do I do about that? What do I do about that now? Where is Attorney Flowers? He used to tell us if it's close to being unethical, be ethical, and tell the truth.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I close the public comments. I want to be very clear that we all understand that this is the meeting that is public. This is, these are the documents that all of us are looking at. This is the transparent process, and that is a really good thing about the discussions that we're having tonight. They're open, they're public, they're on the television, they are published in writing, they are everywhere. So this is the public process. With that, is there any further discussion?
Mayor Dean, I want to make a point, I want to make a point. I had absolutely no idea that we were giving the executive team a half a percent increase. I didn't read this book and understand that. I had no idea until in the last fifteen minutes. If the rest of the council understood that, then I'm not being totally communicated with, because I didn't understand that. That just came up. So you can do what you want, but I didn't know it. That's it.
I have something to say as well. Maybe you can give me some dates, Vicki. When was the preliminary budget put out for public review? It's been over a month.
It would have been late May.
Late May. And this budget that we're looking at tonight, when was it published?
This was put out last Friday.
Okay. You can't say it isn't out in public. It's here. All you had to do was pick it up and read it. And it is not our responsibility to make sure that everyone pays attention to what's going in, on in City Hall. They have to take the initiative, and sending out a letter to everyone isn't going to do it. So I disagree with your disagreement of transparency issue. It is very transparent, and you could have read that letter on Monday or last Friday as well. So...
Okay, do we have any other comments? Are we ready for a motion?
I do have a question for the city attorney. Is there any chance that by opening up another, talk about contracts, that you're going to contaminate the other contracts for the other city employees in the city?
Would that be, you mean, with the employee group contracts?
That's correct. In other words, if we act on something tonight, does it have the opportunity of going into the other contracts?
No, sir, it doesn't, because the other employee group contracts are covered by the Myers-Muller's Brown Act, which requires meet and confer and all of those procedures prior to amending them. So I don't believe that, that this action would in any way have, have an impact on your negotiated collective bargaining agreements with your employee groups.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I just respond to one thing that, that the last speaker brought up, which is a question about a closed session that occurred a couple of meetings ago? I was also one of the people who informed the speaker that the topic of the closed session was not a merit increase, or any increase for that matter, for the city manager. And I think council members who were in attendance know that that was not, in fact, a topic of discussion at that closed session. There was no discussion of compensation for the city manager during that closed session as we, I think three of us informed the speaker would not be the subject of the closed session. And I think it's important to, to just note that what we, what we told the speaker about the topic of that closed session was, in fact, the truth. There was no discussion of an increase to the salary of the city manager at that closed session. And I would agree with the mayor, the statement of the mayor, that the discussion this evening is the, is the appropriate point to, to, to raise these questions, because it is a discussion in part about the compensation of these employees, that's part of the budget.
I'd also like to say that we've done a lot of work on labor contracts since I've been on the council in the last five years. The amount of the decrease in pay for the employees in order to pick up their own purse, no one's ever discussed that. Nobody's ever complained, nobody's ever said a word. But I would like to thank the employees, all of them, every one of them, for picking up their share, for negotiating in good faith. And I want to say that we have worked cohesively as a team, whether it's the police department, or the lifeguard department, or Public Works, or the executive team. And I think it, in that same good faith, where they took on this responsibility that I thought was theirs, but nobody had ever given them before, they took it on willingly and cheerfully, and I never saw anything about it or heard anything about it. But there's an outcry over transparency for a half a percent to help offset that for the executive team only? I don't know. I'm, I, I think it's very transparent. It was in the letter. I can't make people read letters, I can't make them understand letters. It's in the letter. If we choose to vote yes tonight, then it is a totally transparent and ethical thing to do. So with that, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen.
Okay, should we do these individually, Craig?
Yes, I think that'd be the best way to proceed.
Okay, do I have a second to adopt the budget?
Second.
That's four ayes and one no to adopt the budget. Please show Mr. Miller as the no. The next one, do I have a motion to approve the CIP budget for two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's five zero to approve the CIP budget. The next, do I have a motion to set the appropriation limits for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Please vote. That's four ayes and one no. Please show Mr. Miller as the no. Do I have a motion to authorize appropriations by fund, establish new fees, and adopt an amended and restated two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen comprehensive fee resolution? Is that the resolution that I want? Okay, resolution number six five seven four. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So move.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, please vote. And again, that's four ayes and one no, and please note that Mr. Miller is the no. All right, thank you very much. I think this is a really good discussion, and I, I thank you all for coming and participating in that discussion, because that's what makes this good government. Okay, moving on to item I, street lighting district number one. We are being asked to adopt resolution number six five seven six. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our finance director, Vicki Beetley, will present this final item tonight. Vicki?
Thank you. City Manager Ingram, Mayor, members of the council, this is a process that the council goes through each year. The street lighting district is a citywide street lighting district, and each year, we ask the council for authorization for the assessment to be put on the property tax rules. And there's no change to the request from last year, so the fees that were identified in the previous council report and, and the engineer's report are here tonight for your consideration. And I also have representatives this evening here from Willdan, in case there's any questions that might come up from the council or as part of the public hearing. And with that, I'll ask, answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the street lighting district? Case being none, I close the public hearing. Are there any, is there anyone that wants to make a motion to adopt resolution number six five seven six?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Okay, I'll do it.
Step right up.
Second.
All right, please vote. That's five zero to adopt the street lighting district number one, resolution number six five seven six. And with that, I would like to say there is no new business. I would like to do two things. Adjourn the city council meeting to Monday, July thirteenth, at five thirty P M. to meet in closed session. If deemed necessary, there may be a time change, so check the agenda. And then the second thing, the council needs to return to closed session to finish one of the litigation items. Okay? And with that, then we adjourn to closed session.
And we'll report out at the end of that session this evening.
Thank you.